All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December Planning Commission meeting. If you would, please stand. We'll start off in prayer and then follow by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, join in in prayer. Father God, thank you for this day and thank you for our community. Lord, just pray for wisdom tonight and pray you bless each and other one here who have asked of Jesus. One minute, please.
Good Lord, we are blessed to be here today. To the Father, which is saying, one nation under God, indivisible, with thy great justice for all.
All right, let's go ahead. It is seven o'clock. We're going to go ahead and open our Board of Adjustment meeting. Laura, if you would, please do a roll call.
Bird, here. Lo?
Here.
Prater?
Here.
Knack? Young?
Here.
O'Gwen?
Here.
DeArmond?
Here.
All right, to have a quorum, I'm going to go ahead and sit. We're actually in Planning Commission, not Board of Adjustment. We'll go ahead and get approval of the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting from November. If I could get any comments, adjustments, corrections, or a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Prater to a second?
Second.
Second from O'Gwen. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Bird?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Knack? DeArmond?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
All right, six one, minutes are approved. Let's go ahead and break over into our Board of Adjustment meeting. A roll call, please, Laura.
Bird?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
Prater?
Here.
Knack? Young?
Here.
O'Gwen?
Here.
DeArmond?
Here.
All right, same thing. Meeting minutes from the September Board meeting. Any corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from DeArmond, second?
Second.
Second from Lo. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Bird?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
All right, six one minutes are approved. All right, let's go ahead and start with our new business item. Laura?
This is a variance request at 509 Crepe Myrtle Loop. Variance request to allow a pergola to be located within the rear setback. Alicia Paisno. Okay, so for this variance, again, it is located at 509 Crepe Myrtle Loop. They, the applicant is requesting a, to build a pergola in her rear yard to encroach within the rear setback. As you can see in the staff report and the pictures provided, the property is currently zoned R2S. She's asking to build this pergola and be within the rear setback of the property line. She'll be approximately nine and a half feet from the rear property line. Again, you can see in the application that she's provided pictures of her, the rear of the backyard where she has an existing porch. She's wanting to attach to the existing structure of the house on the roof line. Approximately a nineteen foot by thirteen and a half foot pergola addition in the rear of the backyard. Again, the variance would be a request to encroach within the setbacks of the current yard. There were not any outstanding items in the staff report. She is here to address any questions that you may have for her. If you have any questions for me, I can answer them.
Laura, what is the setback requirement? I was trying to find that.
For R2S, I believe that is a twenty foot rear setback. I'm looking, I'm sorry. So she's on an interior lot, so a rear setback for an R2S is twenty feet.
Okay, thank you. Alicia, do you want to add anything?
Hi, good evening. Alicia Paisno, good evening, Planning Commission. As you can see, one of the reasons why that the existing porch is a smaller porch, and so we wanted to extend our outdoor living environment. And behind our home is a private road, so I will not be impeding into somebody's backyard, and nothing can be developed behind that, so that's why I feel that this variance is well within the limits. I know that it does, is smaller than this, than the established by the code, but we're asking for that for our backyard for some outdoor enjoyment, so thank you. If you have any questions.
Alicia or Laura, were there any letters from neighbors or anybody?
I did not receive any phone calls on this, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, is anyone here to speak for or against this item? All right, seeing none. Commissioners have any questions for either Laura or the applicant?
There's no utility or drainage easements within this rear setback.
Not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware of.
Now, Alicia, is this going to be physically attached to the back of the house as well?
Yes, it is, and it's being constructed by a contractor.
Yeah, so this wouldn't fall as an accessory structure or anything like that. This is actually physically attached to the house, so it's... Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Prater to a second?
Second.
Second from Bird. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
All right, five zero. Motion passes. Variance is granted. All right, it's seven oh seven. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing for the Board of Adjustment, and we will move over into the Planning Commission public hearing. First item on the agenda, Laura?
Rezone seventy-eight point one-two acre tract along Highway Five, rezone from R1 to R2S, BTR Real Estate Solutions, Inc. This is a real, a rezone application for a piece of property that is located on Highway Five. It is approximately just over seventy-eight acres in size. They are requesting a rezone from R1, single family, to R2, medium density. They are proposing to build approximately on, develop into about approximately a hundred and seventy-nine lot development for proposed duplexes. In the staff report, the graphic that shows the proposed boundary was incorrectly drawn. There is not a cutout along Highway Five. They are actually proposing the entire seventy-eight plus acres to be rezoned from R1 to R2. As you can see, they provided a sketch of what they potentially would like to develop these lot sizes into. Again, there's approximately just under a hundred and eighty proposed lots. They have proposed green spaces in there. They are proposing, I believe, a park within the development if this goes further through. In the staff report, we did talk about some stub streets needing to be located to the south and the north of the property so that we can have connectivity, but again, that could be addressed at preliminary plat stage if it gets that far. So the applicant is here tonight. If you have any questions for them, as far as any questions that you have, or if there's any questions that I can answer, I'll be more than happy to.
All right, thank you, Laura. Does the applicant want to come up and speak?
Sure.
My name's Don Overton. I represent BTR Real Estate Solutions. That's not working. We were here a few months ago on an, on a, on this, a similar project of this, the similar layout, but in a different location. The biggest complaints at that meeting were traffic and, and flow through an existing neighborhood. So we searched and looked, so we found this site, which is on Highway Five. If you'll, Chad, if you go back to that other... If you look on the, on the sketch, you can see where we've got two proposed boulevard entrances, in the north and the south. Those are on either side of, of the slope, of the crest of the smaller hill there on Highway Five. And so that'll be our entrance, so we won't be entering or exiting through any other existing neighborhood. It'll basi, it'll more or less be an isolated, like a pocket neighborhood, if you want to say. What they are duplexes. That's what we're doing, R2. So there, it's one side's a two-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage, the other side's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage. We've got a five-acre park, five-acre plus or minus there in the middle, kind of centralized. And that was a comment that Mr. Young had made when we talked to him on the previous one, that he thought it would be better to have the park centralized, located as opposed to where we'd had it before. So we made that, that change. In that park, that's where we'll have a dog park, walking trails. We'll leave that native, and then that's where we'll put our cluster mailbox too for our mailing. So if you look, so all the, the interior ones are going to be alley loads. There'll be rear load. That's what those, the dash line's running through there. So there'll be no parking on the street on those. The ones on the perimeter on the outside, if we develop those, will be a traditional with a driveway coming in off the street. The northeast corner of that lot, there, we've talked to Tim Joyner at Cabot Water Works, and there's a long-range plan with Cabot Water Works to run a sewer main that currently terminates at the Dollar General off a main up through there. So we've talked, that's why that's all green right there, because we plan on dedicating that for that line. That's a low spot for future use for the city Cabot, for y'all's growth that way, because as Laura said, the north property line is the city limits. North of that is, is Lone Oak County. West, on the other side of Highway Five, is outside of the city limits as well. And so it's, it's R1 to the east and then R1 at the south, and there's, and purchasing this seventy-eight acres, there's also sixteen acres south of this, which we're purchasing as well. We're going to leave that as an R1 buffer. So there'll be sixteen acres between us and the neighborhood to the south, which I believe is, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's West Oaks is the neighborhood, but there'll be a fifteen-acre undeveloped buffer between us and them if this is approved. We know that there's issues with, again, talking with Tim Joyner at Cabot Water Works, of runoff from that, because that is the top of the hill. That's why we've got a lot of the green down there on the bottom, because what we're going to, we're going to try to, well, we're going to capture all of our water. With that buffer, that'll help absorb some of it too. I mean, at the end of the day, when we get through with this, and this will all be resolved in the plat process, because we've got to go through stormwater and all that in the plat process. But by the time we get done, there'll be less water coming off that hill when we're done than there is today, because from what Mr. Joyner told me, it just runs like a river off of there, depending on how hard it rains, running down into that neighborhood and stuff. And so we're cognizant of that. That's why we've got a lot of the green buffers areas down there on the bottom to absorb that. The lots, and I've got that in the packet, so our lots are going to be seventy by one thirty-five on the infill lots. The ones on perimeter will be seventy by one forty. So we're not asking for a smaller lot size, which is allowed under the R2. We're just asking from the R1 or the R2 for the, to be able to put the single family attached. The staff report says that they're apartments, but they're not apartments. These are single-family attached homes. They'll have a front yard. The tenants won't have to mow them. We'll mow the, we'll mow the lawns. And so it's a house without the hassle, right? So you pay your rent, you pay your electric, as opposed to living at the Point or the Avenue or the townhouses at Greystone. People can live here, and instead of having an apartment, they'll have a house with a yard and attached garage. So it's a house for all practical purposes. Last year, the train just went through Little Rock, and in March of twenty-three, it started in my backyard, dropped two trees in my house. I built one of these in Little Rock, finished it in twenty-two. Last year, I lived in one of the three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath for ten months while I rebuilt my house. And so I, you know, somebody commented the last time about, you know, why don't you live there? Well, I did. I lived there for ten months. My kid loved it. I've redesigned the plans, I can't tell you how many times, because my wife's like, this door swings the wrong way. This outlet needs to be over here. We need an extra outlet here, right? And so I've lived in the thing for almost a year, and we've fixed all the stuff that, that you only get to see when you live in it. And so, you know, and as I'd said the last time that I was here, currently in Cabot, you know, the, the three newest luxury or high-end apartment complexes, the Avenue, the, the townhouses at Greystone and the Point are at ninety-eight point six percent occupancy. Between the three of them, they have eight open units. Traditionally, if you're at ninety-five percent occupancy or more, that's, that means you're full, because there's about five percent in turnover with people moving out, cleaning and that. So they're above that, which means they've got people moving out and moving in without even being cleaned, you know, or barely cleaned, because they're on a waitlist. And so there's a need for more rentals. Again, we've picked this location because it, there, there's no impact on traffic on any other neighborhood. There's not going to be anybody driving through any other neighborhood streets to get there. They'll turn in and off of Highway Five. Highway Five, as, as everyone knows, is being widened by the Highway Department. That's, I think, I think they got the, the right-of-way got their appraisals last month. I've been talking to right-of-way agent for the Highway Department. My engineer, Mr. McGetrick, has talked to their design engineers. And this is in the packet too, so the north entrance into the neighborhood will be a right turn only off of Highway Five going north, and will be a right turn exit going out, so you'll turn right up Highway Five. The south one will be a left turn lane. And we've talked with the, with RDOT about having that redrawn, and like I said, I'm negotiating with them on the right-of-way if we get through this process, so that there'll be a left turn out and then a left turn in, and then they'll have a left turn lane, just like they've got projected for the street north of this. So it, when Highway Five is completed, it'll be two lanes going south and two lanes going north, and there'll be a turn lane there, coming down, if you're going south. So when Highway Five is complete, it, it's not going to, it's not going to MP traffic flow. Like I said, because we've, we got, we're early enough in the stage with the RDOT to where we've, we've worked with their design team on getting that left turn put in, because the current, their current plan has that median that's going in just past the south of this, and so we're actually going to save them money, because they're going to pull that median up and put a left turn in, as opposed to doing it all the way down. So it's, it's a net, it's a negligible net cost for them. And so that, that was the, you know, potentially a concern, but I, I think we've got that addressed, because it, like I said, there'll be a left turn lane going south for anybody going south from Greystone from that direction. And then people turning left will have that same turn. Does anybody have any que, and then there's pictures of the proposed, of the units that we built in Little Rock, that I built in your packet. I mean, I've actually got you photos of ones, and actually, actually a photo of the one that I lived in for ten months in there too. And then I've got the floor plans as well. So the one-bedroom, the, the one-story has ten-foot ceilings throughout. The two-bedroom, or no, the one-bedroom has twelve-foot ceilings on the first floor, in the living room and kitchen, in the great area, and then the two-story is ten-foot ceilings. So it's not an apartment. It's a house.
Don, I got a quick question. I know this is a rezone, so we're not really talking about the site plan layout or the houses or structures specifically, but I looked at one, the two-story is twenty-six hundred square feet. Is that right?
No, sir. The duplex is two thousand five hundred ninety-two heated and cooled square feet. So one side is a two-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage that's a thousand square feet. You ever take? Thousand ninety-two, I believe. And then the, the two, the two-story side is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, and it's fifteen hundred square feet. So it's a thousand and fifteen hundred.
Okay, I was just adding up your first floor and your second floor on the floor plans here.
Because it's, it's twenty-five ninety-two heated and cooled. The garages aren't included in the heated and cooled, because the, the two-story has a two-car garage, which is, you know, a lot of square footage that's not heated and, it's not included in our heated and cooled, heated and cooled calculation. And I'd gotten with, with Ms. Nobles on our prior application on the, the lot coverage percentage density, and we're well under the thirty-five percent. Because we were under thirty-five percent on the previous application at sixty-five by one twenty-five, and these are seventy by one thirty-five, so they're actually bigger. So we're right around thirty percent, so we're well below the thirty-five. And again, we're not asking on the setbacks or any of that. This is... And again, we're not asking on the setback or any of that, this is primarily just to go to the single-family attached, under the R2.
Alright.
Is there any other questions? And, and I know that this is just a rezone, which is, does this fit the land use of the area? But, and a lot of the stuff I'm talking about doesn't really apply to that, but I, but I'm trying to give more information, so that everybody can, because I want y'all to see that this will fit into the general area. You know, it's, it's a neighborhood of homes, it's not apartments, it's not low-income, it's market rate, these are going to be high-income homes. I, I can't afford to build low-income, I'm doing this, you know, we're going to spend a lot of money building these, so we got to get premium rents. But we believe that the market will bear it, because again, the current market is at ninety-eight point six percent occupancy, so there's a need.
Great, thank you Don, any other questions?
You got one building per lot?
Yes ma'am, and it'll be that duplex building per lot, yes ma'am.
Alright, thank you Don, I'll go ahead and, since this is a public hearing, ask for anyone to speak for or against this item. If you would, state your name, and let us know if you're for or against this item.
Bob Haley, I live in West Oak, and I haven't heard much about West Oak in this, there's not going to be any entrances, I understand, from this outfit you're building. The space between subdivision West Oak and the beginning of this complex, how many feet is that?
Fifteen acres.
Well, that doesn't tell me anything, I mean, how, you know, a hundred feet, a feet or...
Linear feet.
It's probably about four hundred.
Okay, what's going to happen to all that vegetation that's in that area?
Hey Bob, if you would, address your questions to us, and we can, we can let him...
He's behind me here.
Yeah, we, we can let him respond, but you can address it.
What's going to happen to the vegetation that's on that fifteen acres?
Any other questions, we, we'll let him give the answers to all those, but any other questions Bob?
Yeah, oh, he's answered much of it, no subsidies, the water problem. Okay, I'd just like an answer to that if we could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don, if you would, give us...
Sure. So as I'd said, a, a minute ago, we specifically carved out that area to the south, it's, it's a fifteen-acre buffer. We're going to leave it as it is in its current state, because as it is currently, is the best absorption method, is natural vegetation that's there. So any water that's, that's going into there, is going to absorb into something that's there, that has been there for years, better than something that we, that we man-make today. Because if we try to disturb it and do something, we're going to get runoff, and it's not going to be, the soil, the, the vegetation isn't going to be as stabilized, it's not going to have the root structure as it is, the way it is currently. And so that's why we, we're leaving that as a buffer currently, and that's why we're just doing this for the R2, because we want to leave that as a buffer. And then again, if you look, there's, the green spots on that lower, those are all proposed green space and detention areas to catch the runoff, because, to your point, Mr. Joyner told me that, that that's an issue currently, is that there's a lot of runoff that comes there off of that property. And so, our goal is for there to be no runoff to come off of it, you know, we're going to capture as much of ours as we can, you know, that it's possible to, to catch, and ideally, none of it's going to go, you know, whatever we don't catch should be absorbed into that buffer. That's why we're leaving that as a natural green space buffer, because, you know, as we all know, what, I mean, I've got two trees at my office in Little Rock that we planted...
When we put those there?
Like eight months ago, two evergreens, they died in the last three weeks, right? They, they were great, three weeks, but in the last three weeks, they died, that's just, that's just the nature of, of planting plants, you know, you can't guarantee it. So that's why we don't want to disturb it, that's why we want to leave it natural, because as it is right now, it's the best absorption that it's going to be immediately. Because if we take anything out of there, and try to put something else new at this time, it, it's not going to work, right? And so that's why, as I've said repeatedly, that's a buffer, it's a green space buffer, we delineated that out, and then that's why we've got our entrances coming off the front. We don't want to come through the West Oaks, we want to come through there, because in all, for, for, from a purely selfish standpoint, it's almost like a gated community without being a gated community, because those are the only entrances, right? We're not going to have to worry about crime in there, because nobody's going to be in there that's not, that's not supposed to be in there, most people aren't even going to know that it's there. Because when you drive by, you're just going to see green, and unless you know it's there, you're not going to know to go there. And so that, that's, I hope that answers your question on...
Thank you Don, anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Please state your name, and let us know if you're for or against this.
I'm Dustin Daniel, I'm against it, do we need to make any kind of notes that maybe the commission may not be aware about, or other attendees may not be aware of? And I do have a question, one question would be, what's the expected average rental cost per unit? Just to kind of, you know, basically judge what kind of clientele is, is expected. Also, just as a, to be on record, Mr. Overton's well thought out in his ideas, I think maybe there may be some things that are mis-informed on. One's going to be the drainage, the buffer, great idea, that's really about three hundred feet, what he's saying, you can see that on any GIS map. The problem is, most of that's bedrock, it's not a soil that conducts itself to absorbing water, that is why this neighborhood has had a runoff problem for years. Several other residents can attest to that, there's been several homes flooded, the city of Cabot has had to invest money in repairs and work multiple times in this neighborhood over the course of, what, two decades, so phase three for single-family homes was even stopped because of runoff and sewage. You could look back at the history of that and see it, again, well thought out plan, I commend him on that, but you're going to add more units, more drainage, more of a problem, that didn't work then, how can it work now? If anybody has came and seen what happens to this neighborhood during a storm, you'll see, it, it's, it's bad. I have one of the newer homes in the neighborhood, thankfully, it was built up to, to avoid that, but there's several homes that have water problems now. That buffer's not going to handle that, and there's going to be a cost associated with that, you're not going to get by with just leaving that buffer, that's not going to cut it, I can assure Mr. Overton of that. The last issue of concern that I have with the Highway Five widening, that, that's good, that sounds good, we need it. Traffic isn't the biggest problem in that area on Highway Five, traffic flow's pretty good, the problem's accidents. Widening, widening Highway Five is not going to stop the accidents, that entry point is going to create a, a problem, and most likely the need for another red light. So that's some things that need to be thought about from the Planning Commission, the obvious answer in the future would say, well, if that's an issue, they're going to now cut through our neighborhood, and that becomes a problem, so that's just, you know, I think everybody's thinking ahead, and, and trust me, I don't want to stop somebody from developing property, I know housing's a big need, but I feel there's some things that we may be missing, I know this is a rezoning meeting, but these are things that are, at the end, would majorly impact this project and the people surrounding this project, so that's all I have.
Alright, thank you Dustin, appreciate those comments, Don, if you want to address the rental cost average, the, on the drainage topic and traffic?
I can address all of it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the rents are, so the current market rents are a dollar thirty-five for a two-bedroom, a square foot, and a dollar forty for a three-bedroom. And so, I'm not sure what the, what the mortgages are down in West Oak, but that two-bedroom, that's a thousand square feet, is going to be paying fifteen hundred a month for a two-bedroom, the three-bedroom is going to be paying twenty-four hundred a month for a three-bedroom, for rent. And so, it ain't going to be poor people, and it ain't going to be subsidized, because they're getting that right now at Greystone, at the Point, and at the Avenue, and they're at ninety-eight point six percent occupancy, they've got people on waitlists at that, at that rate, and those people don't have a yard, they don't have a garage. And we're going to give them a yard and a garage and a park, and so, there's a need for that rent, and rents are going up, because, you know, I mean, I read a report yesterday that nationwide on average, it costs a thousand dollars a month more to own a home, a new home than it does to rent, when you factor in property taxes and insurance, and all that other stuff on top of the mortgage. Here, you get a house without the hassle, because we replace the air filter and the air conditioner, we mow the lawn, we take care of everything, you pay your rent and your electric. We provide internet, water, sewer, all part of the rent. So there's a need, and it's, but, but it's going to be a high-end price point, but we feel like, like there's more than enough need. The drainage, so this is, this is zoned R1, so we could put in two-hundred, twenty-five-hundred square foot homes under R1, and we wouldn't even have to be here, that would just be part of the plat process, and all of...